We will call the -- this meeting, the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency in session. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Council, report from closed session.
There are no -- there were no reportable items from the closed session at the special meeting.
Thank you. Council Communications and Announcements. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure to attend the San Mateo Library Joint Powers Authority meeting this morning, which I'm a member of, and I can report that the San Mateo County Library System, of which San Carlos participates, is in very strong financial standing and improving financial standing. We -- what else can I say about the library? The library received a four-star rating by the -- or Bureau that rates libraries again this year, which rates our library system as the second-best in California, only after Santa Monica, which is great. I also had the opportunity to tour the Shoreway Recycling Facility last week, which was a fascinating tour, a very impressive facility, and I encourage anyone who has an opportunity to do so. And that is it.
Very good. Mr. Growcott.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Mr. Grisilli.
Nothing at the time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group meeting last week, and happy to report that Caltrain ridership is up to 53,000 riders a day, which is -- I don't know how many that translates into a month, but it's -- I believe it's over a million. There were a couple of comments about -- there's going to be a presentation on building longer train platforms, and the electrification process, by the way, is proceeding. There's a lot of cable and communications equipment that needs to be laid all the way from San Jose to San Francisco, and that is proceeding on schedule. And they are also -- Caltrain's also looking actively to buy cars to add to the trains so that they can have six cars, because they are at and over capacity at this point. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have a couple of things, not actually of items, but one thing that I wanted to bring up is, at our last meeting, a resident asserted his rights were violated because I refused to agendize something. The item in question purported to be an appeal of the Park's Recreation and Culture Commission decision. And I say purported here because I think what we actually have is a misunderstanding of what the right of appeal actually is and how it works. And since anybody can misunderstand that kind of thing, I want to take a minute and just explain for the benefit of the public how it works. For an item to be appealable, three conditions must be met. The item must involve a decision to take or not take an action for a permit or some other similar discretionary item. There is no right to appeal a discussion, even one about whether or not to consider a possible action. The action must also involve applying judgment or discretion. Actions that simply involve applying the law are not appealable. Appeals must also be filed, if the opportunity exists, with the city clerk within 10 days of the action that's being objected to. In the case at hand, none of those conditions were met. I won't go into details about that, because here I'm mostly talking about process, but if anybody's curious, I would encourage you to talk to the city manager. He could fill you in on that. Once I determined that there was no basis for an appeal, I decided to treat the matter as a request that I propose the topic as a discretionary agenda item, which is certainly reasonable. Any citizen can ask any council member to put something on a future agenda. People may think that such requests get agendized automatically. That's actually not the case. Only a council majority actually can agendize discretionary topics. Furthermore, council members have the right, and I would argue the obligation, to exercise judgment about what topics they propose to the full council. Since I believe the underlying request in this instance is contrary to the public interest, I declined to propose it. But I told the resident he was welcome to approach other council members or the full council, both of which I believe he did. If there are facts I am unaware of which call for a different outcome or procedure, I'm open to hearing them. But no rights were violated. Instead, I complied with and upheld the law. Now, the other item that I had is I realized after we had -- over the last couple of meetings agendized some new topics from the dais that I had neglected to include two things that I think are -- would help improve the process. One is, I think it ought to be our practice, whenever any of us up here propose an item to be put on a future agenda, that we actually give Mr. Malphey an opportunity to opine as to how much resource is going to be required to prepare the item for discussion. The reason being that we have this whole process of biannual, semi-annual strategic planning process where ideas of many different kinds get brought up and kicked around and compete for resources, basically, the scarce resources of staff time. If we just agendize stuff from the dais without having input from staff, we'll miss that opportunity, and we can actually cause other things that we may have wanted to get to earlier or that we've already decided to get to earlier to get pushed out. So that's one item that we're going to -- I'd like to see us ask staff through Mr. Malphey for input on our ideas before we actually decide on them. The other is, as we mentioned a couple of meetings ago, revisions to the state law actually require the council members on action items be very clear about what their position is so the record can adequately reflect that. And I think we ought to do something similar with agenda items that we propose. And all that really boils down to is I want to make sure that if we're going to discuss something, we're going to add it to a future agenda, that there are three council members who actually want to do that and not have it happen by default, where perhaps people don't want to necessarily do it, but they haven't expressed an opinion one way or another. So basically, what I'm suggesting is that we have a -- not so much a discussion of the item, but we just make sure that, yes, their hands raised or heads nodding or whatnot, that we actually do this. It's very similar to what Mr. Malphey does in general anyway when he tries to read body language off the dais. I'm really just suggesting that we make it a little bit clearer for him. Now, because we didn't apply either of those things to the last couple of meetings, and I certainly added a number of items to the agenda, I want to briefly go back through those and make sure that the council is, in fact, okay with adding those to the agenda without going through the strategic planning process and also give Mr. Malphey an opportunity to weigh in on those. So in no particular order, I had actually asked that we get a report from staff on how our building inspectors are handling inspections for code elements of resource requirements, in other words, water efficiency, energy efficiency, and whatnot. The building code is getting an increasing number of those in there, and I had wanted to get a report from staff on how they're handling it, whether we need to do any more training, whether there are staff implications. So, Mr. Malphey, is there any -- would you care to opine about the resource requirement for that?
Yeah, if memory serves on that item, we had talked about that. I would classify that as a relatively low-level staff item in terms of time or resources for it, just a matter of sitting down with the building inspectors and getting, you know, their feedback, as well as the building official.
Okay.
If memory serves, though, we were going to wait on that item until -- because there was a delay in the implementation, so we were also going to delay that.
We're talking about something that's a number of months out. Are there -- I obviously want to talk about that, because I suggested it. Are there at least two other people who would like to talk about that? And if they're not, then we won't put it on the agenda.
Sure.
I have no objection.
That's different from wanting to do it. Okay, I only see two people who want to, so we'll put it back on the -- discuss it at the strategic planning meeting and see whether it survives there. I had also requested that we have a discussion about whether we want to establish a customer service policy review, basically talking about establishing some standards in terms of getting back whenever residents call or email us about problems or issues in the city. Mr. Malphey, the resource side of that?
Yeah, the -- actually, that was on my to-do list, and, you know, and I think in our conversations, I had passed that on to several council members, that it was likely going to be an upcoming item. That item's virtually ready to go. We've reviewed it at the staff level. The policy, as the council knows, already exists, the customer service policy, so since the review's been -- already been completed by staff and the policy already exists, putting it on the agenda for the council to take a look at and consider amending, really, at this point, would require more of your time than any staff time, so.
And we are the guardians of our own time. So again, I obviously want to talk about that. Are there any other voices up here who would like to talk about that?
I have a question on the item.
Yes, sir.
I know later tonight we have -- I don't know if it's on -- I think it's on the consent calendar, actually, the PCG contract. Does that meld into that issue at all in that using IT to track, you know, response to complaints, that sort of thing?
I think the consent agenda item is more specifically, or generally, about IT resources. It's not about the customer service policy per se, although you certainly could imagine using information technology to do that.
Right. But the council member's point is very well taken in that, you know, we do have a customer service -- customer relationship management program right now that has been not particularly successfully implemented with our other software and are looking at possibly bringing forward a project later this year for replacement software that could do that. So the two issues are definitely linked in that way.
Okay. Again, I would like to see us talk about that. I guess Mr. Malphey had indicated it's coming forward, but is there interest in talking about that?
I'm interested.
Okay. That's two.
I agree with one.
Three, four? Okay, then that stays on the agenda. I had also mentioned that I thought there were some cleanup items from our Transit Village action of last fall involving garbage issues, garbage collection issues, and the location of shuttles that I wanted to see addressed and just put to bed one way or another. Mr. Malphey, how would you describe the resource footprint on that?
I think that's probably moderate for -- in terms of staff time, but since, you know, I don't -- I don't see that follow-up as any -- anything new. It's really more of a timing issue, and we're going to -- a lot of that is dependent on third-party information that we receive from SAM Trans and Caltrain, so really assuming that we have access to the information we're going to need to give the council that update, then it's probably not a particularly significant item in terms of staff resources, and there's really no cost associated with it.
Okay. Again, it was my item, so I'm interested in talking about it.
I am, too.
Yeah, I think we should -- well, I think some of those things, we should just -- they should be separated, bifocated from the approval, I think. I think we have, of course, the city attorney might correct me, but I think we have the power to do some of it. We don't have necessarily the power to do all of it, because there's third parties involved. Like for the shuttles, it seems to me we do have the power to do that. Maybe I'm wrong, because they'd have to come around onto the train area, but I don't know, whatever. I'm willing to talk about it.
That's fine. All right, so we'll add that one or leave that one on. The next item, which was also mine, I guess I had -- I should stop generating ideas. I had asked that we have a discussion about a couple of different dimensions of our own compensation, basically, at some point. Mr. Malphey, what's involved with that? Are staff being -- preparing that item for discussion?
Staff has already been preparing that item for discussion. Again, that was another item that was sort of originated off the staff radar in that, you know, it's been several years since the council has looked at their compensation and said, "Obviously, we're operating the city under a different economic paradigm right now, and it's time for the council to review that." It's not a particularly difficult or time-consuming item for the staff to prepare. The salary and benefit resolution already exists. The tracking data, the comparable data's already there for the council to consider. So again, it's an item that I would think actually would take up mostly your time at this point, so if it's something that the council wants to consider, it's really your own -- your time is what you ought to be considering.
Understood. So that's something that I'd like to -- again, my idea, I'd like to see discussed. Are there any other people up on the dais who'd like to see it discussed? If not, I'll bring it back in the strategic planning discussion.
I would, although Mr. City Manager's comments makes me think it must be pretty small, since the lifting was so easy.
Well, that's two. Is there anybody else? Okay, we will push that one back to the traditional strategic planning cycle. Last item I have on my list from the last couple of meetings is there was an item, Mr. Growcott, I believe this was at your request, that we talk about our -- I have it down here, is our tree sidewalk policy, but I think what it actually relates to is the costs of maintaining trees and planter strips and the sidewalks and some lot -- perhaps some liability issues as well about that, the policies that we have, review of those policies. So, Mr. Malphey?
Thank you. This -- and this actually started the -- this discussion and sort of this clarification of this particular item, because I came back with some of the advanced agenda prep material to meet with the mayor and the vice mayor and pointed out to them that we were delaying a couple other initiatives that had been identified through the strategic planning process by the city council so that we could move this item onto the agenda. This will require fairly significant staff resources to present the council with a fully flushed-out version of, you know, what a change in this area, and it's a -- it would be, if changed, this very significant change to the city in terms of liability, in terms of the maintenance and costs associated with public works and providing those functions. It's absolutely something the staff is capable of doing, but it will take, you know, at least a couple of months of significant staff resources to be able to prepare an item like this for council consideration on a decision. We're happy to do that again, but in order to do this in a short timeline, we will need to move some things around on the agenda. And our public works director can talk in a little bit more detail, if you want, about what would be moved.
May I clarify something?
Certainly.
On that particular issue, what I was looking for was -- I wasn't looking for a global across-the-board, because you, as you had said, if we did that, that would just be, you know, a huge liability and so forth, and it could be an expense that we just simply couldn't afford. I was looking at those residents that got what I call caught between, because there was trees planted, sidewalks put in, in parts of town when those parts of town were developed years and years and years ago. That was just part of the process. They were considered city trees because they were in the right-of-way sidewalk and et cetera. But there was a time where we went through and put in some new trees, and the species, you might say, was questionable. And then right after that, it was shortly right after those trees were put in that the policy changed on who's responsible for the trees and the sidewalks. I think that population is pretty small, and it's those folks with the newer trees that were growing, didn't have the cap -- the root caps on them necessarily, perhaps the wrong species of trees, and, you know, yet these residents who didn't ask for these trees and necessarily got caught with them, and they're problematic. I think it's a pretty small number. Now, I understand you probably have to look at a pretty broad painting to get what's the real picture, but that's really what I was after.
Fair clarification, Mr. Malphey. Does that modify?
Yeah, and that -- I did understand that to be the council member's desire, you know, in terms of, and I believe at the time you described it as sort of the broad approach to the issue, and as you sort of arrived at in your comments, it's a lot of research and it's a lot of staff work to be able to get there. So if that's something the council wants to make a priority, again, we have no problem in doing that at staff level, but we're going to have to move some other things around, because it's a pretty significant project.
Understood. And again, if we decide not to move forward with it here, that doesn't mean that we don't discuss it at the strategic planning level. It's just where it can compete for resources. So, Mr. Growcott, I'm going to assume you would obviously like to talk about your item. Are there two other people, at least, who would like to talk about it? All right, then I think what we'll do is run that through the strategic planning -- strategic planning process. Very good. Thank you. This will go much faster when we don't have three meetings worth of backlog to go over. And now that we've spent 12 minutes talking about what we're going to talk about, we'll actually get into the -- we have one more item to do on communications. Mr. Malphey, do you have any comments that you wish to make about the administrative side of the city?
Just one brief update for the council and the community, and that is on Wheeler Plaza. You may read -- I was contacted a couple of times by a couple of different local newspaper reporters today about Wheeler Plaza, which kind of caught me off-guard, because I thought, "What about Wheeler Plaza? It's not on our agenda." But it is, in fact, on the agenda of a couple of local districts, school districts and special interest districts, and that relates to the city's direction from the Department of Finance to request compensation agreements with other taxing entities on the -- one of the pieces of property, the furniture store on San Carlos Avenue that the city's redevelopment agency purchased. So we're in the process of working with the other tax entities to try to reach an agreement on the fact that the project provides more revenue for them than the sale of one parcel, and we seem to have had a lot of agreement, certainly from the Oversight Board members, but now those items are starting to pop up on agendas, and that's gotten the attention of some of the local reporters. So that's what's happening right now. It's really no change in status from where we've been on the project for a while, but it's slowly moving forward.
Thank you, sir. That completes council communications and announcements. Next item is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council, if we'd ask you to fill out one of these speaker cards and give it to Ms. Moy. I have one card up here. Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from Emoryville to claim the stolen car, my solar car. I have noticed, first, I want to mention, this machine needs some tune-ups. It doesn't function very well. Anyway, I stumbled into a newspaper article, Mr. Ober, in which you were criticizing PG&E line, and I have to take the defense of PG&E, because I did an independent investigation of the PG&E fire, and my conclusion was different than what the general public has been sensationalized by the press. First, in any -- let me state a general principle about whatever, anything is being repaired, either car, a machine, TV, or whatever. When a default happens, that default is not -- I don't call it a virus. That default tends to be with every other machine. In other words, that default is not only on one machine, in all of them, because it's an assembly, it's a line assembly. And so because of that, when a line fails, like the PG&E line, after 50 years, it's hardly a defect. Whatever people blame, the weather and the world, it's -- this is a public perception that it's always the labor's fault, the man who did it, the labor, not the management, of course. They don't work. They never will. So my conclusion is that in my investigation, from that principle, I went to the site -- I don't know if you went to the site of the fire, and what I found there is that prior to the fire, months before, there was some public work done under the line of PG&E by another public entity, which is Artie Hardy from San Francisco. They did that without permits, for whatever reason, and because they didn't have a permit, then the city never inspected the work. The result is that excavation under the PG&E line caused a void, and because of the location, the void tended to pile on the PG&E line. And at that location, which is on the bottom of a--
Mr. Carpio, as you know, we usually only allow people--
Let me finish, because--
No, sir, because I need to inform you that you're well over--
Otherwise, I will have to continue next time. But I want to make a statement.
You have already spoken well over--
You don't need to interrupt me, because I name you as reckless criticism, mister.
No, I have--
You know, you have done that with transom already, so if I was you, I would get out of the city council. You're no good.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Oh, and Ms. Moy, can we check the amplifying system just to make sure that it's working? Because we ought to make sure that that's taken care of. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent calendar. These are items that are normally approved without discussion, and however, any member of the council or the public may ask to have an item taken off of consent and addressed separately. Are there -- if there are not -- does anybody want to take an item off of the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain -- I'm sorry?
G.
G, all right. Anything else? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar absent item G.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent calendars, item A, B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J, K, and L on our agenda here.
Second.
Mr. Council, City Council, do we need to read the name of the ordinance? So we are adopting item E, Adopt Ordinance Number 1471, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of San Carlos and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. I guess the -- is that the only ordinance we have?
There's another one, I believe, adopting--
Don't see any more of those.
I'm sorry. Don't see any more of those.
That's it? Okay. Very good. Roll call, please.
Do we have a reading?
Yes, we did.
Mr. Collins, second.
Mr. Collins, second.
Okay. Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. All right, we will come back to item 7G at the end of our meeting. The next item is item 8, Reports to Council. We have an update on the PG&E natural gas line. Mr. Malphey.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Jeff Malphey, City Manager. This will be a brief update tonight. I'd like to just sort of let you know about a meeting we had with PG&E senior gas staff here at City Hall this afternoon. I would cautiously, optimistically call it one of our better meetings with PG&E in a number of months. The major new information that's coming out of that meeting is PG&E has a desire to move up significantly the timeline that relates to inline inspection or pigability of line 147. That had been originally scheduled by PG&E to take place in the year 2016. We've advocated from the very beginning that we felt like that was the one test that could validate whether or not the line suffered any damage from the hydrostatic pressure testing that was done a couple of years ago that comes out of the dialogue that -- from the famous email of the PG&E engineer. PG&E is currently in the process of doing design work right now on that. They're also working with their environmental division to begin securing permits. One of the -- one of the things that's a little bit outside of PG&E's control is that the -- one of the areas of work that has to be done, essentially, there's a section of pipe that, a little bit like a roller coaster, comes down and goes back up, up by Edmonds, underground, sort of a steep -- they need to take that bend out. It's too much for the probe to be able to negotiate. It would bottom out as it came through there, they believe. So they're going to be changing that section. It's near a creek, and so it's going to require some environmental permitting from the Department of Fish and Game and the Army Corps of Engineers and whatnot. We've expressed our willingness to help PG&E, do whatever we can do, hopefully whatever you can do as our community's elected officials, and try to secure the necessary permitting for them as soon as possible. They believe that if they had the permits today, based on the engineer work-- They believe that if they had the permits today, based on the engineer work that they still have yet to do, they could actually do this, pig the line in five months at the longest, and they are hoping now to pig it in 2014. Again, with the caveat that they don't control their own permitting process here. We're going to be working with them, you folks, and our other state and federal elected officials to try to get that permitting done as soon as we can. With that in mind, we think that that was a major change in development in terms of the overall dialogue that we've been having at CPC and with PG&E. We're very pleased by this development, and we look forward to working with PG&E to refine this and work out a couple of other interim details in terms of how we can make line 147 as safe as possible until we can get that probe through it. So, those conversations will still be ongoing. As the council knows, the mayor and I will be having lunch with the president of PG&E in a couple of weeks. And so, hopefully, after that, unfortunately, that lunch happens the day after a council meeting. But assuming that we have some more significant progress by then, we'll be reporting that out at the following council meeting, and you may hear from me personally between now and then to give you five, an update as to where we're at. But definitely, the first positive progress we've had in a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
City Manager mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Fish and Game. Might it be to our benefit to have staff write a letter that you would sign as the mayor that would go to those different departments or whomever, I guess even the governor in terms of Department of Fish and Game, letting them know, you know, we're more concerned about the safety of our citizens than, and not that these things aren't important, but, you know, when you weigh the two, something to that effect.
I would, just to, I think that's a good idea to consider. Frankly, based on what I have learned about the federal Fish and Game, or pardon me, the Fish and Game authorities, state, that may or may not be the shortest distance to get what we want. So, I think what I would say is that if we, if staff and outside council, for example, determine that that would make sense, I'd be more than happy to do that. I think it would be a really good idea, but I just don't want to jinx it. Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, you mentioned the permitting process that's going to take place over the next, hopefully, five months or so. Who's involved in that permitting process?
Well, the, the site in question, I believe, is on Mid Peninsula Open Space Property, for one. So, that'd be the lead agency. And then, my understanding from our conversation with PG&E officials earlier today is that the two primary permitting agencies would be the Department of Fish and Game and the Army Corps of Engineers. I've asked them for that contact information about who they're working with, so that I would have that and be able to work with you all, as well as our other state and federal elected officials in contacting them to give them the, the local perspective here on exactly what Councilmember Grokot was saying, that this is a unique instance of public safety for our community, and while these environmental concerns and permitting processes are important, this is, there's, you know, a time is of the essence moment here that's involving, you know, human beings and, and human property, so.
Other comments or questions? The only thing I'll add is, I agree, that sounds like very good news. Let's hope the good news keeps coming. Thank you for your efforts and all of staff's and outside resources' efforts of making this happen. And I hope that we will make sure there are no resource constraints that might slow down any permitting that we have to do. If there are, please bring them back to us right away or just take care of them. And lastly, apropos of Mr. Grokot's suggestion, is, Mr. Rubens, can I get a general sense from the council about whether they're supportive of me signing such a letter on behalf of the city, if we determine that's something to do, or do we need to bring that back as a separate item?
Yeah, I think we, we have general direction previously given to us by the council to move in an expeditious way, but if the council would like to clarify and specifically authorize the mayor to sign a letter as suggested by Councilmember Grokot, that's fine.
To the chair, I think, I personally would give the mayor authority to do whatever is necessary on any level, whether it's letters or speaking to or whatever, working 24/7 to, no, all kidding aside.
Thank you for being respectful of my time, Mr. Grisilli.
Absolutely. No, all kidding aside, I think, at least my opinion is, whatever is necessary that he needs to do, I would, that's my opinion, I'm not speaking for the other members, but whatever's necessary, I think should, should go forward.
I appreciate that. In the context here, I think, is everybody else okay with Mr. Grokot's suggestion? That's fine.
Not trying to denigrate your, I mean, whatever, letters, whatever it takes.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. We'll move on to the next item, which is, we're now into new business. Mr. Malpe, I did have one quick question before we get started on A. Since we're taking up item 7G, which is the amending, the resolution, Resolution Amending Part-Time Employee Salary and Benefit, it, does that cause a particular staff member or members to stay late if we do that at the end?
I think, based on the order of the agenda, yeah, Ms. Mendenhall will be here till the end anyway, so she'll now have a new last item.
There we go. Very good. Thank you. Then the first item we'll move to is consideration, 9A, Consideration of Introducing an Ordinance Amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 10.32.220, Parking, Three Hours, L'Oriola Park.
Evening, Mayor Ober, City Council, Christine Bowland, Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight, staff is requesting a simple amendment to the municipal code, Chapter 10, to impose a three-hour parking limit at L'Oriola. Currently, there's no time limit other than no overnight parking, which was established about 14 years ago after a complaint to then-police chief Granucci. Imposing a time limit would force movement of vehicles and allow our park patrons and parents to actually be able to park there, and we've noticed over the last, actually several years, that while there are no patrons in the park, there's absolutely no parking. So, surrounding businesses and Caltrain folks and other people in the neighborhood have just decided to park there for free all day, and it's causing an issue with our patrons and our employees, as well as our preschool participants. So, here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Director Bowland. Questions for staff? Mr. Johnson.
Anything? Why did you choose three hours?
We felt four hours was a little too long. You could actually be a neighboring business, pop out for lunch or whatever, and move your car right back into the spot next to the spot you were just in. Two hours seemed a little abrupt, especially if it was imposed on Saturday or weekends. So, three hour kind of seemed to be the right one.
Do we, do we have any other three-hour parking limits in the city?
I believe--
I believe we do.
Yes.
Behind Be and Keenies. Yes, that's right.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, how do you think about Saturdays? It makes sense if people are parking their cars while they're working, or if they're employees of local businesses, Monday through Friday, but, you know, Saturday is when you get a lot of park usage. Why would you want to extend it to Saturdays as well?
We felt that three hours was enough time for, if you were at the park for an actual picnic or soccer, you could do practice and have a game. So, we felt that three hours was an adequate amount of time, and also, it's a small parking lot, so if we can move vehicles a little more quicker than--
So, the three hours on Saturday isn't intended to address the people parking and working at local businesses, it's just to keep enough turnover in the parking lot for, for people that are using the park?
Correct.
Although, I would, I would define that, that people going to baseball games or people going to, sometimes, if construction folks would work on Saturdays in some of those businesses, so I would think it'd be a, the same thing. I mean, it would be, I think, I would agree that Saturday is, it should be three hours.
We're hoping that the, the businesses would move back onto their parking lots, which they should be anyway, and, and allow the parking for the patrons.
Other question? Ms. Cameron, are you done?
Just one, that's all right. One additional question. What's the fine?
Thirty-five, I think.
Please, chief.
It's like a parking ticket that you might get on Laurel Street, the same fine. It's about $43, I believe.
Okay, and, and there's no towing? It's just a, it's just a parking ticket?
It's currently posted for no overnight parking, so I imagine if there is a car that stays overnight or longer, it would be, the city could tow the vehicle.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Who are you? Mr. Collins.
Vice Principal, please.
I'm just wondering, did you get much feedback from the community, and is there any sort of a, sort of a spillover effect of maybe some patrons of those businesses possibly parking in the neighborhood?
We have heard a lot from the community as far as the preschool parents. They pull up at 12 or 1 o'clock and have absolutely nowhere to go, so they decide to pull into the sheet metal workers' parking spots and only to be talked to by the sheet metal owner. So, it's kind of this funny situation that they're in, and they're frantic because they don't want to be fined for picking up their child late. I did personally go out there and leave my business card on about 10 or 12 different cars. So, if you want to call that outreach, that was my attempt. I got one phone call back. I had a very angry sheet metal worker, and I believe the police sergeant took a walk over to the, the strip mall on Holly to talk to the businesses, but they've continued to park there. So, without enforcement, we're really in a tough spot.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Grokot.
Just in terms of means of enforcement, do we intend to put in the, I call them the hockey pucks that we put in downtown, or is this just going to be done with the enforcer vehicle that goes around and chucks the tires like they do at the plazas?
I believe it would be with the police departments. I can't call them meter maid.
Yeah.
Parking enforcement.
So, parking enforcement with the, chalking the tires.
I believe that's what we're, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Grisilli?
No, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think this is a good change. We've changed stuff, no, I'll stop for a second, but we've changed stuff, and we can always change it again if--
That's correct.
The world spins around, so it's not like this is forever. So, I think this is, personally, I think it's a great, great, great move, but--
Nothing is forever. Or few things are. I, I just actually wanted to follow up on a question that Mr. Grisilli had asked, just to, because I wasn't sure I quite understood the answer. So, there, to the best of our knowledge, there are businesses in that area that may or may not have employees using the lot that operate on Saturday?
On a Saturday, yes. The strip mall operates on Saturdays. The sheet metal, I don't believe so. Could be wrong, but I don't believe they work on Saturdays.
And then, of course, there's the other types of employer, employees that Mr. Grisilli referred to. That's fine.
Go to a baseball game.
And Caltrain. Hey, you could be there, yeah.
All right. We do have, thank you very much, Ms. Bowland. We do have one card. Claire Kelly would like to address us. If there's anybody else who would like to speak on this topic, please fill out a card. Give it to Ms. Moy.
Hi. Claire Kelly, I live at 1046 McQ. In my house butts up to the park, and I can tell you that I see people, and being retired, I see a lot of things. I see these people get out of their car, and they go to Holly Street, they walk up the alleyway to go to the other businesses, and on Saturday, some of the automotive places do park their cars in our neighborhood. So, yes, and I applaud the city for addressing this because it's, it's long overdue. Enforcement, I guess, would be the next thing, how that would be enforced, but congrats to you guys for doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Would any, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we introduce ordinance number--
1473.
1473, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 10.32, Parking, Three Hour, L'Oriola Park.
Second.
There's a motion of the second. Is there any call for further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to 9B, Discussion Concerning Water Reduction Measures in Response to Potential Drought. Good evening, Tara.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to do this without breaking anything, so bear with me for a moment. I have a very short presentation.
If you run into any problems, Mr. Grisilli is an incredible tech worker.
Just a whiz.
Fabulous.
As long as you have, oh, a couple of three weeks, I can take care of it for you. Pretty soon, you're going to start calling me a luddite.
No, I would never do that.
My name is Tara Peterson. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager.
Tara, excuse me, I apologize. Could you move over and speak to the microphone? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had all my stuff over here. So, tonight, I'm here to present you some information to allow you to discuss the drought and potential water reduction measures. I would start with some statistics. The normal annual rainfall in San Carlos is 20.5 inches annually. As of 4:00 last evening, all rainfall for the season, which is from July to July, is just short of four inches, and the percent of normal is 19 inches. So, while we had a nice rainfall, it didn't do that much to our numbers. Current water restrictions, the state of California has implemented a 20% voluntary reductions statewide, and the San Francisco PUC called for 10% cuts in various counties, including San Mateo County. Calwater follows the directives of the, of the San Francisco PUC, and so, they do have in place currently some voluntary conservation measures and some plans to implement more in response to a continuing drought. The City of San Carlos, some information about all water use. The community uses 1.2 billion gallons annually. The city itself uses 2.7 million gallons annually. Twenty-seven million, thank you. A reduction of 10% would be 2.7 million gallons, and a 20% reduction is 5.4 million gallons. The city uses water for our park water features, buildings, landscaping, and our playfields. Some of the conservation actions that we have taken in the recent years and currently, we replaced the grass field at Highlands Park with synthetic turf. We employ a computerized irrigation system. We install drought-tolerant plants whenever possible. We have recently shut off our two water fountains. We install water-saving features anytime there's an upgrade to any kind of facilities. We use mulch in plant beds, which allows for the soil to retain more moisture, and we respond to any kind of water leaks that are reported promptly. We've recently set up some information on our website about what people can do to conserve water. It includes a link to Calwater and a list of different actions that people can take to reduce their consumption. We also plan to include in our upcoming community newsletter some information about water conservation. Here, we provided a list of some of the different options that city staff considered that the council might like to discuss, and each one of them has the gallons that would be saved included. This total would be 2.59 million gallons, which is just shy of the 10% that we're being asked to cut by the San Francisco PUC, but we might want to consider looking at additional options if we need to cut by 20%, which is the vol, the amount that the state has recommended. So, this is the time for questions and discussions. We have here this evening the Public Works Director, Jay Walter, the Parks and Recreation Director, Christine Bowland, as well as the district manager, Tony Karosko. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, he's with Calwater. Thank you.
Can we go back to the list while we're discussing and questioning and so forth? There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions, a couple of observations. The first, I just have to take a little issue with the introductory slide, just because it doesn't really matter how much it actually rains in San Carlos since we're part of, because our water, we don't, you know, collect and store most of our water in San Carlos, you know, a lot of it has to do with the Sierra Snowpack and, and all of that, so that was just one high-level comment. And, and so, I think it would be good to understand-- And so I think it would be good to understand, you know, how, when we say we're 19% of normal in the City of San Carlos, sort of what's, in terms of the upstream water system that we supply or that we rely on, is that sort of consistent with the 19%? Does that look better? Does that look worse? Do we know?
Mr. Karosko, do you have any?
I think, I mean, the question basically is what's the state's water situation?
And we're part of the Hetch Hetchy system, right? So I mean, wherever we get water from, compared, it may be different from other parts of the state, is all I'm saying. And I'm just interested to know kind of the specifics. And maybe we don't know at the moment, but do we know sort of the same quality of system?
Want to come up to the mic? I bet you have an answer for that because I know it was in the paper.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember, as well as city staff. The, you are correct that the water that we receive in all the peninsula comes from different sources, whether local supply, the Hetch Hetchy, some of the lakes and rivers that collect that end up in the peninsula waterways in addition to Crystal Springs Reservoir. And as we, I went to a presentation done a few weeks back, there's, part of it was a state, how we are doing throughout the state, and then also, particularly with the peninsula areas from San Jose to the East Bay, all the way to San Francisco. And although we're, you know, we'd like to have more supply, the peninsula is in the best shape of anywhere else. That doesn't mean that we're not concerned, but because of our, the reservoir levels from the last couple of years were extremely high, there's been a lot of great effort with the communities on conservation and also looking for alternative supplies, which we've ramped up. And there's different things that you can do during dry years, is you can take water from groundwater source so that you can retain the surface water. And so, and so the peninsula districts have done an outstanding job, including San Carlos, with conservation programs. So we're in much better shape. That doesn't mean that we're not concerned. You know, this recent rain did help, but it is a, I won't call it a drop in the bucket. Now we're calling it a cup in the bucket. But again, a few more good storms like that, and I think we'll be in better shape on the peninsula. Other parts of the state are, they're in a little bit different shape than we are.
That's, that's good to hear. And I echo, you know, your point that it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be conserving and encourage residents to conserve. Should we, in terms of peninsula water, should we be looking at Sierra snowpack? Is that the primary source of our water? Or are there other, is rainfall, you know, up and down the, in the general region play a role also?
I think we'd like to look at everything. And obviously, the snowpack for storage for the months to come. The one thing is we also have a local supply. You know, the reservoirs that I mentioned, Cherry, there's several reservoirs that, and lakes that we all use water from. But also, it replenishes some of the groundwater source. And what we're able to do is because collectively, the peninsula districts are, you know, we receive water from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, but we're also part of BASCA, the Bay Area Water Conservation, Water Supply and Conservation Authority. And so we're able to make savings in other areas, other towns and cities, and conserve and really help areas like San Carlos if needed. So just speaking about Cal Water is we have, we have our own reservoirs. We have our own treatment facilities for surface supply that's benefiting San Carlos. We have wellfills that we produce water, serving other cities, but it offsets. So we're able to utilize a lot of our other sources to help out all the districts, including San Carlos.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a few additional questions.
Oh, sorry.
If that's all right?
No, that's fine.
So in preparing for tonight, you know, I took a look at the, at the general plan. And there are a couple of policy items and action items related with water efficiency and water conservation that weren't reflected in the, in the list of kind of actions that the city has taken for water conservation. And given, you know, I think there's no time like a drought to sort of reevaluate and sort of see where we are in that. And I was wondering if you could comment on that or if somebody could comment specifically. In the general plan specifically, there are three action items. One is to establish water conservation goals for city buildings. Another is to evaluate potential incentives for encouraging residents to use drought, residents and businesses to use drought tolerant plants. And the third is to develop a recycled water implementation plan. And I wanted to kind of check with staff to see, because I didn't see those reflected in the kind of action items that the city has taken to see where we are on those items.
We certainly, I believe you mentioned three items, one of them being using drought tolerant plants. We do do that whenever possible, and we can look at encouraging the community to do that as well. I know that Cal Water has some programs for conservation, which, as I mentioned, is accessible from the website, and it has some different things that can be done. We can certainly encourage that and talk about that when we're outreach to the community.
So but current, so currently today, though, we don't have, the city doesn't have a program where we're providing incentives for residents or businesses to?
No, there is no incentive program.
Okay.
And then you mentioned a couple of other, I apologize.
Specifically, it's, it's in the general plan. So that's item 5.6. 5.5 is to establish water conservation goals for, for city buildings.
I, you can, actually, in response to all three items, there's currently no city initiatives to implement those sections of the general plan right now. But that's certainly something that the council can discuss in terms of putting a plan together, having the staff put a plan together to do that, in terms of the resources and the budget that would be required for all those things.
Okay. Thanks. And then one, one additional question, which is, you know, you cited in the options to consider that it's a total of about 2.5 million gallons. And yet, you said to make the minimum 10% voluntary reduction would be 2.7 million gallons? And that, you know, 20% would be more, obviously, much more. So if, I guess if we're being asked to consider and prioritize potential actions that we could take if we were, if a 10% plan, a 10% reduction was imposed, or are there, are there other options on the table above and beyond these? Because it seems like this doesn't really get us there.
Through the chair. Actually, this table doesn't add up because I just did it. The wild card there, Mr. Johnson, is the 1.5 million for the seeding of playing fields? If you add that in, it's approximately, this comes to about 3.2 million, this total, if you add that in. So.
That's some good on-the-fly math.
There's some, well, that's what I do for a living. So, yeah, I add up everything I've ever seen. It doesn't go, you can do it in your head and you can come up with it.
There is no number associated with the watering of the playing fields.
I see.
So when you bring that one, and that will be the huge number, we just don't have it yet.
But if you add, if you added that, it would be about three, that number would be about 3.2 if you just went down the line and added them all together. Because I just did it. So anyway, just to go from there.
Thank you.
Hey, that's what I do.
That's all my questions for a moment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Gocat, it looked like you had some questions.
Yeah, I do. Mr. Mayor, may I, may I add a point just a moment as it relates to the list? One of the things that we are doing is, as was mentioned before, we do have a, an irrigation control system that relies on moisture sensors to help us understand when best to water so that we're not wasting water. And one of the things that we're doing is we're, we've set up a meeting with our vendor of that system to help us get a better handle on how that works and how, what are some of the ways that we can look at that we would be able to reduce watering, yet not completely stop watering on certain park fields and grass, but have a better sense of how that system can help us be smarter about how much water we're using and not have it just simply rely on only the moisture sensor and it's going to water when it's dry. We can allow the water, or the fields to stress a little bit and, and yet still water them to be able to have surfaces to play on. But that's a meeting that we're going to have here in the next couple of weeks. And I think that's going to be an important one for us going forward as it relates to the various landscape and lawn watering that we have to do.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Yes, Mr. Gocat.
So the question I have, one, one question is, I don't see incorporated into this the artificial turf fields. While they don't have to be watered like a grass field, my understanding is they are watered. And I don't know if there's any wiggle room there to cut back on those procedures.
There, there is. And at least one of the things that we identified in the other table was that we, with the installation of that artificial turf field, we have been saving up to 4 million gallons per year from the original turf field. So we do have to water that in order to, to kind of help with the maintenance and grooming of the field, but it's certainly not nearly as much as what we'd have on a, a regular turf field. We can come up with a number from what we've had to do in the past. If that's helpful for council, then we can have that information. We just didn't have that before tonight.
And the, the other question I have, sort of segues onto Mr. Johnson's, and that is, I doubt you have this information, but what I'm wondering about is if we reduce or stop altogether watering at some of these parks, where is that going to put us in the long run in terms of replacing landscaping versus, I think what Mr. Johnson might have been hinting at is if instead of, you know, essentially hurting a park and its, its plant life, looking at some, obviously, it would impact our budget, but, you know, for, right now, we're doing all this remodeling on the, on the City Hall project, for instance, and looking at this building, going through and looking at toilets, water fountains and so forth. And, and I know, you know, there's, in today's marketplace, there are water consumption reducing devices that we could switch to and probably in all our buildings at some point. But looking at spending money there versus cutting off water here and spending money later on something that already exists, you know, the, the plant life being the thing. I don't have information in front of me to weigh those decisions, and I would like to weigh those decisions. So that's, am I right?
Yes. Yes, a good point. And we can look more into those kinds of options. It was just when we were looking at those, we were looking at some of the larger items. This would certainly be something that would be a smaller bang for the buck, but we certainly can look into that and get back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to jump on the whole council or stop discussion necessarily, but myself, I'm seeing a need to maybe table this for a couple of weeks, give staff opportunity to respond to some of these things. Perhaps, maybe when we get discussion, we can, that's where I am right now after the questioning.
Other questions?
I just had one. I believe we all got an email that was forwarded to us by a member of the community suggesting that maybe the restaurants could only serve water when requested. Is that something that the city has, has any say over? Or do we just send out a friendly suggestion to them?
Yes, at this point in time, that would be our recourse. There is no ordinance in place that?
Right. I didn't think there was.
Requires any reductions, but it's something that could be considered.
And the, the state has not yet taken those, the more aggressive steps that would basically empower us to be able to do that kind of thing.
I, I do remember very vividly back in the 70s when we encountered our first drought, back in the mid 70s, that the restaurants adopted that. And it was, it was, it actually had a carryover effect for several years. You had to ask for water.
Right. Mr. Grisilli, questions?
No, no questions, no.
I have, I think, three or four quick ones here. I proposed the discussion earlier on about how well San Carlos may be positioned within the Cal Water system compared to perhaps other parts of the state. One question I have is, is how interconnected are the various water systems? I mean, water is a fairly precious commodity. I would imagine if they're interconnected at all, we might be sitting pretty, but if some other part of the state is in a disaster situation, if there's a way to do it, they're just going to take the water. I'd just be interested in, in input on that.
Thank you. That's an outstanding question. Because we're, we're all constantly looking at utilizing other utilities and municipalities to transfer water. And so all the municipalities on the peninsula, from San Jose to San Francisco, are connected in some way through, through major pipelines or through smaller interconnects that are anywhere from six inch to 12 inch up to 80 inches of pipe. The areas that we're looking at now is transferring water from the, some of the state water projects through, for instance, East Bay Mud, down through Hayward and out over to the peninsula. So what we've done is we've connected some piping. We're doing some pilot studies to, to try that for a while and see the impact. And, and then if there's a, during dry years, if we find that, well, this is, you know, this is a really great option, then really look at that and enhancing it.
I was actually, I appreciate that. I was actually interested also in a little bit bigger picture. Let me give you a hypothetical. If Southern California is in dire straits, is there a way to basically tap into and divert some of the water from ultimately the Hetch Hetchy system, which is a big part, as I understand it from the earlier comments, of feeding the Bay Area, to feed Southern California?
Yeah, that would be through the state water project.
Right. But it's technically feasible. They could do that. Okay. I'm only pushing on this because I, I want to make sure that people don't perhaps get the wrong impression of we may be sitting completely pretty and isolated from everybody else. The reality is that, that, well, there are actions and political decisions that would have to be made. The fact that one party has a lot of water and another party has none doesn't mean that we get to ignore the problem. The, the other question I had is some of the things that, the ideas that were coming up, not on the staff list necessarily, but from the dais, about encouraging drought tolerant plantings and whatnot. My understanding is that we could not, for example, require those through the building code process or through our code process without doing some kind of analysis indicating that it's, it's appropriate to do? But we do have the authority to do that?
Do you have the authority to, to regulate landscaping and such on a policy basis using your police power as a city council? I think I'd be, what you're talking about is sort of legislative findings, why we would want to do that, why it's important, and, you know, establishing the, the reasons for it.
And that would, that would effectively be like our, our code currently in structure, or currently targeted for new construction, remodeling, I don't know what the analog of remodeling a landscape is, but something like that.
Yeah, we currently don't have a, unless it's in a large project, you know, people do not have to come in for a permit to do landscaping. They might have to if they were putting in a major irrigation system, and that might technically trigger an electrical permit or something along those lines. But you could, for instance, pass a code that, or an ordinance amendment that would say it's illegal for your landscaping to run into the storm drain, for example. So that's, that's, it's already there. Okay, well, that's a hypothetical example that already exists. But we could, those types of things, we could come up with as secondary effects of overwatering or wasteful water use. Or we can go with more direct, like required drought tolerant landscaping in conjunction with a project. Or we'd, we could develop a separate standalone ordinance that would require a permit for landscaping. That's probably, we'd really have to study that, I think.
And by the way, I'm not proposing that we launch and doing something other than that. I just wanted to understand what the ground rules were. What is the, Ms. Peterson, what would be the impact of reducing, not eliminating, but reducing seeding on the playing fields in terms of water? I mean, it, it sounds almost like what we'd be saying is we're not going to reseed the fields and therefore we don't have to water them more intensively from when we do the seeding, or is there something else?
Mr. Mayor, that's not exactly correct. But this is a, this is a program of overseeding that typically takes place in the winter in order to have a, a grass that is, that kind of helps the field stay green through the winter months. So this overseeding process could be eliminated. And we would end up with, say, slightly mottled or brownish-looking fields in the winter months, and then spring would come and everything would green up again. But it's not the elimination of seeding the fields entirely, it's the overseeding that would typically occur.
Does it have, the way you've described it makes it sound like it is almost purely or entirely an aesthetic issue. I mean, does it, does it affect the, the regeneration of the field in the spring?
No, very much a, an aesthetic. No, very much an aesthetic thing. The grass generally goes dormant through the winter months and comes back in the spring once it starts to warm up in the water, and we get water on it, so.
And the last question I had is, we've been approached or asked by the San Francisco PUC to do a voluntary reduction of 10%. What's the consequences of not cutting 10%?
Well, there wouldn't be any consequences as it is voluntary program, but-
It would be unhappy.
-for the community to look at, it's being requested to reduce by 10%, and if the city is not taking a leadership role in that and reducing its own use, it could be perceived negatively.
It's a little tough to lead by example if you're not leading. Yes, we look bad. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to see if there's any, thank you, Ms. Peterson, if there are any public comments that people wish to make. I don't have any cards, but, okay. We don't have a action item in front of us, and as Mr. Grokot had said, we may want to, in fact, I suspect that this is a kind of issue that is going to be coming back before us on a number of occasions. So, should we have some discussion about what, if any, direction we want to give staff? I think clearly there have been a number of questions raised. Mr. Grokot, again, was pointing out the point about there's some areas where we need some more information. It'd be useful to have more information. Other comments, discussion that people want to make? Go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, I'll sort of reiterate what I said before, which is, you know, the wisdom of folks who participated in the general plan process going back, you know, several years now, identified, I think, some really good strategies for reducing water use for the city. We live in California, we're all residents of California, we all have to be concerned about water usage, and if we don't start seriously thinking about these things now, I suspect, you know, when it starts raining again, they may fall farther down the priority list. So, I would like to look at some of the items on, in the general plan, there's also some additional ones in the climate action plan that are really industry best practices about how to efficiently use water. The second thing that I would say is that if it comes to making some reductions in the city water usage, I would try to prioritize things that are of aesthetic value over things that, you know, kids are playing on, you know, our sports fields, the water features in particular, you know, there are relatively small amount of water. I think they're very visible, but, you know, they contribute tremendously to the quality of life, and so, I'd like to, I personally would want to prioritize, you know, things that are green so that we can look at them rather than things that are green so that we can play on them.
Fair enough. Mr. Grisilli?
Interestingly, we are a little bit on the other side, at least I am on this one, because I think by turning off the play water at L'Oriola, Burton, et cetera, that we give an example and sort of educate young people of what the problem is. And I certainly agree with you on the, on some of the other things you mentioned, but I think, I think we should turn those off. In fact, those are the things I was going to say, we, the Burton Park, the L'Oriola Park, and stop watering the Vista Park landscaping, because I don't think it really needs it up there, it's basically natural. That's three items, and then, as Mr. Walter said, the seeding, I think we should basically, if we haven't already, stop doing that, and that's going to give us at least part of a way, again, I think it'll show the community that we're trying to do some of the stuff, the city's trying to do some of the stuff to save the water. So, those are just my comments. But again, that's why there's five of us.
Absolutely. Mr. Grokot?
Maybe I'll strike down the middle between Mr. Johnson and Mr. Grisilli.
Would you like to sit here?
On this list, anything that I saw that said, "Stop doing this" or "Stop doing that," graded against me a bit, I think. So, in terms of the water play features, I do think you could strike a middle ground, especially I'm thinking in the summer months, and if this drought continues, if we don't get good rain events, which, you know, potentially we could get through May, that might help pull us out of the drastic measures that we're looking at here. But with the park play, we could do something that says, you know, these are, these features are only available on the weekends, or, you know, every other day, or something like that, because kids do use them, and they're a striking part of our parks, and being that we don't have a swimming pool, sometimes it's a real relief to have these features there. In fact, I know people come from other cities to our city because we have those. And I feel the same way about just shutting off water at parks. I agree with Mr. Grisilli about the one, because that's how it's supposed to be designed anyways, is that you don't have to water it, but the other ones, like, for instance, the downtown park, which one is it on the list there?
Lower Street Park.
Lower Street Park. Already, it looks horrific, and I've had a number of people say that to me, and it's because the grass is just really looking bad on that hillside, so I think, on all these things, I would rather do something that either eliminates the need altogether, like, let's put artificial turf there, you know, people just use it to sit on anyways, or keep it looking decent and water it, but to shut it off entirely, I don't quite agree with. And then, I just come back to what I said before, I would really like us to see a plan here that, as Mr. Johnson was alluding to, looks more aggressively at things that we can do, they're really long-term fixes, like our water uses, usage because of our fixtures. The only, I'll just comment on that, the downside to that is that the next time you're asked to cut back 10%, you've said to yourself, "I've done all these things to be right, and now I'm asked to cut down another 10%." You know, there's no good boy allowance for doing the right thing in the future, but I still think it's the right thing to do to change up fixtures where we can and see if we can budget that.
Through the chair, I just wanted to make sure I was clarifying with my comments. The water features, I feel we should go off, but I agree with Mr. Grokot, except for Vista Park, which I don't think needs it. I don't want to turn off the water at the parks, just like you mentioned, because then you're just-
Long-term.
Long-term, so I, again, there's, trying to find, again, the middle ground on some of this is hard to do, so, excuse me, thank you.
Oh, that's fine.
I can have a, sort of a combination of everybody's feelings. When I was looking at this list, I was seeing turn off, stop, and only in one case do I see reduce. I would like to see us come up with a long-term plan to, it would be a contingency plan for a 10% cutback, a 20% cutback, maybe even a 50% cutback. I think that we can, there's probably things we can do now just to reduce the watering of areas of the city that we control, and I think I'd like to see that sooner rather than later. There was an article in the paper this morning about, or yesterday's paper, about the aquifier in the state at a critically low level, historically low level. So, I think whatever sample that we can, or whatever example that we can set for the future, we should do it. I agree with Mr. Grisilli, we need to turn off the water on the play areas. We will set an example by doing it, we will teach young children that, we live really in a state that historically has been affected by drought probably half of the last thousand years, if you look at the, if you look at the historical records and tree rings. So, I would love to see that we have some sort of a strategy and that we publicize it, maybe we put some signs out, and that also, maybe we put out some, we look at park areas that maybe don't need that water, maybe put in drought resistant plants that reduce the area that we need to water. So, I think there's a lot of things that we can do and maybe develop a long-term strategy. Maybe that's something that we talk about at a strategic planning meeting as well.
Okay. The, actually, that last comment, just a riff off of that, Mr. Collins, I actually think this would be a wonderful topic to make sure that we bring up at the strategic planning meeting in March. To my knowledge, I don't think we've actually talked about this since I've been on the council, and apropos of Mr. Johnson's comment, you know, that don't let a good drought go to waste. The, I never thought of the term "good" and "drought" going together, but maybe there is a silver lining to everything. So, I would definitely like to see that on our discussion for that day, specifically about a longer-term plan and looking at how we can put some flesh on the aspirational goals that were spelled out in the general plan for the community. I do think that there is value to, on many levels, to do, exercising a little bit of leadership here and looking to cut back on some things, okay? We can always turn things back on if there's some miraculous recovery, but, you know, for me, I definitely lean towards, let's not worry so much about the aesthetics. I do think the comments that some of my colleagues made about, there are values to community members, particularly children, about some of the play features, I think that looking, taking at least initially sort of a nuanced approach there to perhaps trim them back somewhat and, you know, keep cutting it back more and more if that ends up being necessary, I'd like to see that happen. However, I think the main thing that I'd like to, oh, pardon me, and one other thing, I do, I also very much support Mr. Grokot's idea, which I translated in my head as, let's look at opportunities to substitute capital for water consumption, you know, look at making investment to make some long-term reductions in things. So, I would like to see staff come back with that. And the one comment that I would make is, I'm not sure it's actually a good thing for the council to, on an operational level, to sort of be picking and choosing exactly what things are going. So, my preference would actually be to, based on this discussion, I hope staff and Mr. Malpe in particular have taken away some sense of what the council's priorities are, and have you start executing it. I mean, you are in charge of those kinds of, those kinds of decisions. We obviously need to be keeping, kept informed, but my preference would be that you do, you know, you take, start taking some reasonable steps and ramp those up as need be. Certain things you're going to have to bring back to us. There may be things that arguably, like turning off a water feature, that you may want to bring back to us, that you may, strictly speaking, not have to. So, in general, that's what I would see. And the very, very last comment I'd make, apropos again to the young people in our population, I think this might be a really good teachable moment to tie in with the schools, not only the public schools, but the various private schools in town as well, to highlight for the kids the situation we're in and how things can be done locally to make a difference. And we may find, not surprisingly, that they themselves will buy into and support trimming back some of the things that they desire in order to, in order to make sure that we get through this problem as smoothly as we can. So, I would actually also ask staff to do that as well, reach out to the various schools. Any other comments or items?
Like, just to make one last argument in favor of water features. And my argument is that I don't think that any cuts should fall sort of disproportionately on kids, you know, kids who grow up in the California school system, there are lots of opportunities to learn about conservation and about the fact that we live in a climate that's prone to drought. I mean, mostly what you're talking about is, you know, three, four, and five-year-olds, and I don't, I don't think it's the, you know, who are running through the sprinklers, running through water features on a hot summer day, and I just, I don't like the idea that we're saying, "Well, it's our job to teach you, this is California, and, you know, you should be conserving water," since largely they're not the decision makers in terms of, you know, how they're using their water, how they're setting their sprinkler systems, and so on and so forth. And so, I, you know, I respect everyone's opinion, and I hear that, but at the same time, I just feel that, you know, turning off all the water play features, it's one of the great things about being a kid in the summer, and I would love to look at opportunities for kind of a more shared distribution of cutbacks, and particularly targeted towards, you know, people that fully understand, internalize, and are the decision makers in their own water consumption.
I have a question. The, we touched on the restaurant thing, and I didn't, it wasn't quite clear to me how we would, it's not on the list, and it wasn't quite clear to me how we would deal with that. Is that a ordinance thing, or is that a message we send out through the chamber, a suggestion, or how's that done?
Currently, the most straightforward thing that we can do, the quickest thing we can do is to, is a, you know, send it out, as you said, through the chamber as a request for people to consider. Having talked to staff about this before this meeting, we don't have the authority in the way our ordinances are written to actually impose that at this time. Now, I suppose, Mr. Rubens, we could task staff with giving us, putting something together that would grant us that authority, but I seem to recall that that's a somewhat unusual step, even in California.
I have, I could do some research, but I'm not aware of cities like ours that don't have their own utility, doing those types of things, and we've generally relied on our water service provider to, through the rate structure, incentivize conservation or set those types of rules through their independent billing, but it's certainly something within your power, use, like I alluded to before, using the police power that a council has to impose those types of restrictions during a drought emergency. I think my suggestion is that we continue to study those types of things, if those are options that you'd like to see, and, but, short answer, it's within your power to do something like that.
It would make sense, I think, to put it on the list to study. Would it also, I actually like the idea of, if this is where you're going, of making, you know, restaurants aware of, as a voluntary thing.
That's more the direction I would rather see us go, is, you know, use a light hand first and see what kind of response you get.
Unless anybody has an objection, let's also task staff with figuring out how to do that.
In terms of the public outreach-
Yes.
-of conserving water?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll continue to work with Cal Water and-
And specifically the restaurants.
And the chamber, and specifically on this issue. Again, I think this was a great discussion, this was a starting point for us. As you can see, we still have information gaps that we're working on in terms of water consumption. A lot of really good ideas and observations from the city council. As Councilmember Grokot pointed out earlier, and this is something I was talking about earlier, there are no points for good previous behavior.
Oh, that's right.
Unfortunately, but there's also sometimes a lot of points awarded for just dumb luck. And one of the things that we have to understand at the staff level is, we'll be taking Crestview offline the entire summer this year, or renovation, and as such, we won't be watering a significant field for a significant number of months, and that may be enough to meet our city voluntary contribution for the entire year. But again, we're trying to study that and paint a picture now. Obviously, if the drought were to continue into next year, that's not going to help us, but we're trying to piece it all together so that we can come up with an informed and balanced program for the community.
Since you touched on this, both you and Mr. Grokot touched on this, I will also share the results of, some aspects of conversation that Mr. Malpe and I had about that issue of there are no points awarded for being a good conservation person. That's actually simply because of the way in emergencies, the limited resource gets dulled out, and those of us on the council actually have, actually, any member of the community does, but we have an opportunity because of our somewhat unique positions to urge, for example, Cal Water and our elected representatives that if and when it gets to that point, that we do something a little bit more intelligent than say, "Everybody cut back 10%." There are other ways of doing it, they're more complicated, but it gets rid of the perverse incentive where it's basically like, if you think there's going to be a drought, you should waste water now so that when you get cut back, you know, you won't be having to kill everything in your yard. All right, well, that was a good discussion, thank you. I'm sure we'll be talking about that on several occasions going forward. We will move on to HC, consideration of adopting a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an updated joint powers authority agreement between the city of San Carlos and the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services, and reaffirming membership in the San Mateo Operational Area Emergency Services Organization. Did that all in one breath, Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor Olbert, and members of the city council, Greg Roth is police chief, and I am here just to kind of highlight some of the aspects of the staff report on requesting that the council authorize the city manager to execute an updated joint powers authority agreement with San Mateo County Area Office of Emergency Service. Our relationship with the county in this area is about 30 years old, the last document that we have in guidelines is 1997. Since then, as you're well aware, we've had September 11th of 2001, and a lot has occurred, and so, the Emergency Services Council had directed staff to take a look at updating this agreement, and really what they're looking for is to reflect current laws, rules, directives, orders, and trends in the area of emergency preparedness, homeland security, and those sorts of things. So, they selected a committee of individuals that could help to rewrite the plan or revise the plan, included San Mateo County Human Services Agency- the plan, included San Mateo County Human Services Agency, a lot of local fire agencies, as well as the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services, which is both sworn and non-s sworn law enforcement personnel. A lot of the changes that they did was really basically to revise the format, to add new recitals and new definitions and updates and those sort of things. I guess what's most substantive about the new agreement is that the changes are not themselves substantive in terms of financials, in terms of the way we do business, in terms of formulas for costing. Everything pretty much is status quo, but it really was time for a rewrite and a revise. So this has been done, and you have before you, which the document you have before you was vetted through the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, the San Mateo County Fire Chiefs Association, as well as the San Mateo County City Managers Association. All three groups were comfortable with this document, and I'm—that's all I have. I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Questions for the chief?
I, I have a question I'm not sure is for the chief, or, or, you know, maybe it's something for a later discussion, but I'm just curious regarding JPAs in general, the constitutional authority, the state constitution, to enter into agreements like this?
There, there is a, a whole body of law in the government code that authorizes joint powers authorities, and generally each member agency that's in a joint powers authority approves the, the power, power and scope of the JPA, and, and that's usually set forth in the agreement. In fact, it is set forth in the agreement that, what the powers and purpose of the JPA is.
So again, back to the beginning of your answer, the, the authority from the state is—
It's in the government code.
Government code section, yeah. Just a comment, and the reason, the reason I'm concerned myself with it is, we've got different JPAs, and even as is discovered here, different things happening, like the Form 700s, for instance, you know, some more, you know, I know when I served on the library, and they, they bugged me all the time for those. Airport Roundtable never did, other organizations I served on never did. And then, it's, it's just curious to me how these different boards are set up, how, how we, we sometimes get appointed to them, or the mosquito abatement district. Maybe there's a discussion for a different item, but it's something that, when I saw this was on the agenda, I thought, this is curious to me, and I, I think it's worthy of some kind of discussion at some point, so.
Okay. Other questions? I, I actually had a, a observation I wanted to make. One of the things that this—I was our representative, primary representative to this JPA up until this past January. One of the things I didn't get to that I will just tee up for my successor to think about and see whether my colleagues agree with this. My understanding is it's been a little bit of, of time since we last did any kind of art—this organization did any kind of RFP for the Hazmet Services. Hazmet Services are actually currently, and have been for a number of years, provided by the Belmont—originally, I guess it was Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, now it's the Belmont Fire Department. Personally, and I have no axe to grind about this, but I just think it would be a worthwhile process to go through, as it is in many cases like this, after a sufficient period of time, as best as it has, to go through an RFP process and see whether or not there's a, a cheaper, more cost-effective, whatever way of doing this. So, with that, I don't, I don't have any cards to public comment on this. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to—put on my glasses so I can read this. Move to adopt Resolution Number 2014—
16.
—16, a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an updated joint powers authority agreement between the City of San Carlos and the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services, and reaffirming membership in the San Mateo Operational Area Emergency Services Organization.
I second. So we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Griselli, I'll tell you, you know, see, if it's electronic, you can just expand it, then you don't need your breath.
Brutal.
We'll call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. Okay, we move on to Item 8D, consideration of adopting a Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act compliance and implementation plan, and adopting a resolution for safe harbors under the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, the council will be considering adopting a resolution establishing how the city measures affordability and the reporting period in conjunction with the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act was enacted on March 23rd, 2010, and as of January 1st of this year, all U.S. citizens and legal residents are required to obtain health insurance coverage. Large employers must offer affordable healthcare coverage to all of its full-time employees and dependents. A large employer is an employer with 50 or more employees, and an employee's monthly premium contribution must be affordable or no more than 9.5% of income. And the ACA defines full-time employees as those who worked at least an average of 130 hours per the reporting period, or per the calendar month per the reporting period. This is different than how the city currently defines full-time employees. Regular full-time employees work 40 hours a week. So this changes it to be about 32 hours per week. So there's three ways to determine affordability. One is based on the rate of pay, where the premium cannot be more than 9.5% of the hourly rate. The second is based on the Form W-2, where the premium cannot be more than 9.5% of the wages in Box 1. And the third is based on the federal poverty line. The recommended way that—to determine affordability is to use Option 1 or the rate of pay safe harbor. This is the least costly and easiest for us to administer. In addition, the city needs to establish a reporting period to determine which employees may be deemed as full-time under the ACA definition. And it's recommended that the city use a period of 12 months as the lookback period. This allows for averaging of peak hours worked by employees, particularly during the summer months. A longer reporting period may reduce the number of temporary employees who would otherwise qualify under the definition of full-time, if we had a very short reporting period. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mendenhall. Any questions? Mr. Grocott?
One of the things I was curious about is, how does this affect us? What are we considered?
Well, the elected officials' salary and benefit resolution, that's coming on a future agenda, as discussed earlier tonight, and we're working with the labor attorneys to see how that does impact your group.
So we don't know?
At this point, we're still researching that, but we'll have that information before we bring it forward for the elected officials. You're covered under a different resolution than the part-timers.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Griselli?
This afternoon, I heard on the news that the Obama administration had extended, I thought, another year for, for groups from 50 to 99?
I, I did not hear that today.
I heard that too, yeah.
It was a late—
So how does, I guess, and then come, combined with that, how much is this ballpark going to cost when we implement this?
It would depend on how many employees would qualify. So right now, the, what you're determining is basically the reporting period and how we figure out if they're affordable or not. So even if we were to, even if it delayed the implementation, the, this is just establishing those measurement periods.
I appreciate that, but again, I'm trying to identify how, what I'm getting at is if—I'm wanting to make sure that we don't vote on something that we don't, and we pay for it, that we don't have to pay for. You see what I'm getting at?
Right. Every, every part, or every person that would qualify would be an additional, I want to say—
$6,300 in the staff report.
$6,300 per year.
Each person?
And right now, we have, of our part-time group, there might be, there's one that may qualify now, and it could be up to—
Again, I apologize, I'm not getting the number, and maybe there isn't a number. I'm trying to identify if we, because of what Mr. Grocott and I both heard on the radio today, how much is this going to save us, or do we have to wait on this? And if we implement it, how much will this cost?
If we implement this, it would, the implementing this just determines the reporting period.
Okay.
The actual cost would be part of the salary and benefit resolution for the part-timers.
And which—is that what the—
Let me, let me jump in here, because I think I understand what you're asking.
Yeah.
There's no cost associated with this action—
Okay.
—tonight in relationship to when—
Okay.
—the law is implemented, if it was extended.
Okay.
All you would be doing is sort of pre-identifying how you're going to measure—
That's fine.
—since it is implemented.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't get the cart before the horse.
Right.
I'm trying to make—
I understood exactly what you were coming at.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize, I wasn't clear.
Mr. Malpe? Just, just to clarify a little bit, while I was reading through the staff report and listening to the presentation, it sounded to me like theoretically, theoretically, depending upon which affordability safe harbor you picked, you might have slightly different numbers of individuals on the margin that qualify. And, and that was going to be my question. And, you know, given our relatively small universe, it, it may not actually have a numerical effect. I mean, if you had thousands of employees, it might have an effect. So i—is that correct, where it actually, which, which safe harbor we choose could theoretically affect the number of people who qualify, and hence what we, who we would be liable to pay money for?
Yes.
Okay.
The reporting period would establish that.
Okay. And, and staff, staff is recommending, as I recall, you said, the, the safe harbor, which is the simplest one to administer. Have you studied it from the point of view of assessing whether or not it, it is likely to have more people qualify than some of the other options, or less? Did you look at that dimension of it?
I think the, the piece of it that would have more people qualify would be the reporting period.
Okay.
And the reporting period, we did look at, if we were to pick a, like, a three-month period, more people would qualify. So you can choose between a three and a 12-month period, and since we have a number of part-timers who work a lot of hours during the summer season—
The 12-month.
The 12-month would make more sense than—
Right.
—in, as far as a cost perspective.
Okay. So, all right, so, so basically, it sounds like the main determinant in terms of looking at the future cost impact is the lookback period.
Okay.
Which they have already picked the longest lookback period they, that we can go with, and it's the one that we believe would actually, not that we're trying to not qualify people, but it would have the effect of, of having a, a smaller number of people qualify.
It would average the time better.
Average the time better.
So if you, instead of looking at just a three-month dense period of time, you know, you'd, more part-timers work in the summertime than they do in the rest of the year.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I did have one more question, and that was simply, the reason I pulled the other item from the consent calendar is, it appeared to me that these two were tied at the hip.
Yes.
These two action items. Can you explain that?
Well, this, this is determining the, the reporting period that we would use then in the estimates for the other item.
Okay. Makes sense.
Okay. Other questions? This side of the dais is unusually quiet on this item. I, I was actually expecting, Mr. Collins, that with your expertise, you would have thousands of questions to ask.
Oh, please, no.
No, I—
Okay, that's fine.
Actually, I live this every day.
Every day. You're trying to have to live it in the evening.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, of course, there may be somebody who might want to speak on this.
I have no cards. Is there anybody who wants to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2014—
17.
—17, a resolution of the city council, the City of San Carlos, adopting a resolution for safe harbors under the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have additional discussion?
I—
Yes?
Relative to what Mr. Griselli and I both heard, I, I question taking action on this at all, because there's so many moving parts in what the president is willing to enforce, or engaging himself to enforce, where he's willing to make exemptions, and so forth, that I, I don't see the urgency to taking this action until the dust settles, if you will.
I, Ms. Mendenhall, but just to clarify for me, I thought I heard you say that basically adopting this resolution doesn't necessarily put us in a position where if the president's decision today, or the administration's decision today, were to somehow defer when we, when we were liable to pay money on this, that we would still be, we, having made this decision, we would be obligated to pay the money. Now, that may be a difficult question for you to answer, because I don't think you were actually familiar with what was announced today.
So, so what you, by adopting this today, we're just establishing the, the reporting period and the mechanism to determine if it's affordable. If the deadline, or if the implementation dates push back a year, then this would go into effect in a year.
Is it—
And I'll look to the city attorney if I'm misstanding something.
Is this, can we change, let's, as Mr. Grocott said, the moving parts of this are immense, could we then go back and say, oops, we really shouldn't have done this, we should really pick something else?
Absolutely.
So we can change our minds?
Yep. I don't think there's any downside to it.
Okay, okay. As long as we can change our minds, then I think we're, you know—
All right.
They could change the rules.
Yeah.
Mr. Grocott, was your point, I'm not sure if you had finished making the point you wanted to make.
Yeah, I, I guess the next item that I pulled from the consent calendar is probably more critical, because that's actually agreeing to change a, an MOU with employees that would give them this health insurance. So this one is just a, you know, how are we going to look at our reporting? But—
All right. No, I just want to make sure you have—
Frankly, I'm, just to be clear, I'm going to vote no on both of them, because the, the concern I have is, by agreeing to this, you're essentially agreeing to the, what the Congress passed and what the president is supposed to be implementing, although he's picking and choosing which parts he wants to implement and which ones he doesn't. And I disagree with that. I think the whole thing, regardless of the Supreme Court looking at it, I think they made a mistake. I think it's unconstitutional, and I can't, if, if I take part in this and vote yes on it, then agreeing to a contract upon myself and upon my city as a council member that fundamentally I don't agree to, so.
I, I understand that's, I personally don't feel the same way.
No, I—
And, and it raises an interesting question. There certainly have been occasions where the Supreme Court has ultimately reversed itself, but, but, you know, effectively, things that they have approved, even when they reverse themselves, they're never unconstitutional, because they're the guys who get to decide what is constitutional and what's not, even when they change their mind. But I know that's not quite your point.
Yeah.
You just, you just don't agree with the, with the decision. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. All right, now we will move to Item 7G, which we had earlier pulled off the consent calendar, that is, adopt a resolution amending the part-time employee salary and benefit Mr. Malpe, is there a staff report on this?
There is, if the council would like one, but, but typically, when an item gets pulled, we'll start by hearing from the council member who pulled it as to what the issue is, because sometimes it doesn't require a, a report.
Fair enough.
I, I really don't have any questions. My position still holds as it was, and so, I, I don't really have any questions, just to, you know, want to see discussion on it. I needed the opportunity to vote no on it, so.
Not a problem. Any, any questions that people have on this item? Then I will entertain a motion. Assuming somebody wants to—
All right, we'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number, oop, excuse me, Resolution Number 2014—
10.
—10, Resolution of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, amending the part-time employee salary and benefit resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so I, I also am going to vote no on this item. The reason that I'm going to vote no is not, not for the same reason as Mr. Grocott, it's because there's a, there's a 3% raise incorporated into this item, and I personally feel that, you know, we as a council have to be, at a time when indeed the economy is improving, we have to be focused on maintaining fiscal, fiscal responsibility and making sure that, you know, we resist temptation to build in more ongoing expense into, into the budget unless it's, it's other, unless it's, it's necessary for the functioning of government, or helps us increase quality of life, or helps us get a return on investment, et cetera. And in this case, I haven't been adequately convinced that a 3% raise is, is warranted.
Any other comments?
I have some comments. I think this is a case where we really need a historical perspective. If you go back to year 2008 and take a hypothetical part-time employee who was making $1,000 a month, and we agreed at that time to give them 2% increases for the next three years. So in January 1st of 2009, an employee making $1,000 a month got a $20 raise, 2%. On January 1st of 2010, they got another 2%, and that brought them up to a little over $1,040. And on January 1st, 2011, they got another 2%. That brought them to $1,061.21 a month. Then, nine months later, actually, eight months later, the city council passed a 5% reduction in the pay. So that brought a part-time employees, and I keep saying part-time, because this is about part-time employees, and there aren't very many of them. So that brought their salary back down to $1,008.15. So the total increase from the end of December of 2008, September 1st of 2011 was 0.8%. That's an average of 0.027 a year. Now, what are we at? Two and a half years later, we are, as I've said before, we're not giving them a rate increase. We're restoring what we took away. We're only restoring part of what we took away. So let's factor that in. So now you got a, that part-time employee that was making $1,000 a month in 2008 is today now going to be making $1,038. That's a $38.40 increase. That's 3.8% over the last six years. So that's an average annual increase in their pay of, well, it's a lot less. I think I had it written down here. It was, what, 6/10 of 1%? I mean, this is paltry. And we're, I think, we have been more than fiscally responsive. I think this is a question of just doing the right thing. If you compare our budget to what it was just two and a half years ago, to what it is today, I don't think this is a big deal. And I don't think we ought to treat it as a big deal. I think there's other things to stand on your principles for.
Other comments? I agree with what Mr. Collins had said. I'd also just indicated, or repeat, as I'd said before, in other contexts similar to this, the economy is improving, the city's fiscal health is improving. I would not, I never say, I have never worked at a public agency where I've ever told anybody, hey, things look great, because they don't. And in my experience, it's very important that you factor in not breaking faith with your employee group, because that's part of what creates the ties that make a high-functioning organization that gives us the kind of performance that we want. And that's a long-winded way of saying, I know for a fact, because I've done it before, that if times get bad, I'm going to be back there asking for givebacks. And the quid pro quo flip of that is when times are not doing bad, I want to honor the implicit relationship there. With that, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grecili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes. And with that, I believe we are finished, and we will adjourn the meeting.